I'll only open the remark this evening with a little thank. The fire department chiefs and deputy chiefs and whatnot for being out here on this great day, hot day, which is better things to do not being here, but thanks for being here. Thanks to our staff and counselors. Could I have a motion to, sorry, notation of counselors in attendance?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll move.
Moved by counselor Brownlow, seconded by counselor Ann. Sorry, Deputy Mayor Brownlow, seconded by counselor Annis. Six months, I'll have you at least. All those in favor?
Aye.
If I'm reminded of any motion here. Declaration of conflicts of interest this evening, do we have any with the agenda topics? We have two. Thank you.
May I adjourn?
We have delegates this evening that we're happy to have here. We have Fire Chief Dean Anderson and Fire Chief Ken Hodgson from our two fire departments, Central York Fire Services, and they're going to give us the reports. So if you gentlemen would like to... One at a time? Okay, sorry, one, one department at a time. Do you want the copies of mine now? I'm sure.
I wasn't sure how many.
It's good evening, everybody. So this report I've got drafted up covers from January first through to May thirty first through the first half of the year. In the first half of the year, for the great part of it, I had fifty-nine calls, which breaks down about eight motor vehicle accidents, five medical assists, three structural failures, fourteen alarm calls, one chimney fire, one off-road rescue, four either grass or ashore forest fires, four hydro pools slash power line, and we had one electrical problem which caused smoke in the house, actually in the business, sorry. And then I also had eighteen mutual aids from either the Valley or Stanley. I think was majority, the majority was probably the Valley. With that, that booked up a collective hours of four hundred and six hours of membership participation in the instances. Within the period of Kestwick Fire Department, I'm twenty-one, regular weekly training meetings with various topics from the bare basics to advanced fire theory. We had four members in the level one firefighters course, which is currently they're active in that now. We've got another three that have completed their logbooks and awaiting their level one certificates. First days, we've had eight members complete their first aid certification and another seven has received their medical first responders certification. We were fortunate to receive a training house this year, getting the spring, which we've been using it quite heavily. We were unable to burn it due to the location of the building was quite close to power lines to the road and the adjacent house we built. It wasn't appropriate to burn, but we did good use of it. We did wall, wall breaching, search and rescue exercises, vertical ventilations, and hose advancements. With, with regular training and the level one training and various other training programs, collectively, our members have logged over seventeen hundred hours of training in this time period. We regularly have been literally attending the Capital Region Fire Force Association monthly meeting. We had two members attend the New Brunswick Association of Fire Production Officer Education Conference in April, and we had three members attend the New Brunswick Association's Fire Chiefs Conference in May. That is my, my report.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have just general questions on the chief's report? We have to keep in mind that CAO is direct oversight of the fire department. So if council has anything that is just generalized to the report, we're welcome to entertain that this So none, or, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So Chief Hodgson, if you would like to come up and give your report, please.
I apologize both the wild look of you. I copied and pasted directly out of FERS, which is the, is the incident reporting system that we use for the problems. So there's no way that I could capture it in such a way that you can read it, but I'll, I'll make sure that I, I cover everything for you. So that's basically how we enter them into FERS. That first column is under fire and explosion dollar. It looks like Kestwick Valley wasn't very busy this year. We've had one event for a total of twenty-four hours, a pretty, pretty slap of the Valley rating. Rubbish and grass fires, we've had twenty-five, sorry, three with twenty-five hours. The top column is the, is the hours and the bottom one is the events. So nine, nine motor vehicles for a total of sixty-three hours. We just recently had a fatality. Some of you people may not know that baby. It was a bad, bad call for us. Public hazard, power lines, things like this here, we had, we only had one for about five hours. Public service, that's where we're helping end the power. It could be end the power, it could be ambulance, could be any of those things. So we had a lot of them for fourteen in eighty-seven hours. And the, and the, the big change for us this year is on the, on the mutual aid side. So we had a total of six hundred and one hours for twenty-nine, which is the highest we've ever had, and it's only for six months. Our highest to date before that, a fifteen-year high was twenty-four for a full year. So it, it was really high. Alarm, no fire, we had two of them, twenty hours logged. Alarm, no fire detector, we had one of them, five hours logged. And something that the Valley really thrives on is, is training. So we had a hundred and seventy-five events. So that's when somebody goes into the hall, logs in, and, and does a training event. So that, our regular Mondays are all in there. If somebody goes in and does a fire fit, or I know there's some young people that are doing their own little fire fit. I don't know if they're preparing for August. There's a, there's a Scott challenge coming out. So some of them have been playing there quite a bit. So our, our hours are only up marginally, but we're always very proud of our training hours. Lots of meetings. We had seventeen, seventeen meetings, logging a hundred and forty-seven hours. Fire department, that one there got cut off, but it's, it's basically just something that somebody went into the hall for, for seven hours. And we have a lot of doers at our fire hall. We had a hundred and five times that somebody went in in the last six months for four hundred and thirty-five hours, and that's for, for maintenance. That's reloading the trucks, washing the trucks, whatever, cleaning the bays, all that kind of stuff. Fire department administrative tasks, like something like this year, we had a hundred and thirteen of them for three hundred and seventy-nine hours. And they're, they're pretty much on par each year. On-call, which is our committee officer. So if we have a big call, Alan monitors the, the call. So he did that forty times, forty-five times for us for a hundred and four hours. So our, our total hours are four hundred, are four thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine. And the total, the, the events, just like in FERS, is, is logged, five hundred and seventeen events, looked pretty special. We have a current roster of thirty-nine members, all of them except for six either are level one or level two. So the, the math on that, if you, if you look at the total hours of the four, forty-four hundred and fifty-nine, and then you less all that there is fluff, the administrator, planning, these, these type of things, it was eight hundred and thirty hours on scene. And the, and the big change for us was, was the, was the mutual aid. So we had a total of thirty-one calls for two hundred and twenty-nine hours for the Valley. And our mutual aid calls, we had twenty-nine. And that's, that's really high for us for, for only six months, for a total of six hundred and one hours. Two of them were Stanley, two of them for Milville-Mackwick, and one was from Fredrickton. And of course, the rest are, are with our friends at the Ridge. Our, we're, we're just ready to, to take our summer break. Kestwick Valley takes July and August off. Can't come soon enough. I just had a new grandbaby last Wednesday. So that's why I was so late getting here. I had to, I didn't see him again. So.
Very congratulations.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I know it's been, been a lot of fun, a lot of excitement in my life right now.
You have a mission of a badge.
No, no, I'm going to get him a little hosier accountability tag.
We thank you. Chief for your report. Do we have any general questions for Chief Hodgson?
I have a problem.
Sure.
Every, both fire departments are volunteers. And I just want to say thank you because it can't be easy to go to an accident and for things not to go the way you want them to go. Not to have the end result, but I'm thankful that you do what you do.
No, no, thank you very much. We, we actually did the training last night. We, we did some medical scenarios. And one of the ones we just did, we had three men fall off some stage. And the sad part about being a volunteer in your own community is I knew all three men. And they, they were all hurt, but the two were hurt badly and one was just walking around with complaining of leg pain. But, so when you're, when you're a volunteer in your own community, the chances of you knowing who you're going to are, are pretty good.
Thanks. We have no other questions or comments? I do would like to address both fire departments. Central York Council, Mayor Council are very appreciative of the services that you people provide. It's, it's a very unselfish service to be along here and provide this to Central York. And we like to address this Central York Fire rather than one here and one here. It's, it's all Central York. So anyway, thank you very much, thanks Counselor Downey, I said, for what you contribute and look after us and keep us safe. Thank you. So next we have approval of the previous meeting minutes. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
I'll move.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Brownlow, by the second. Seconded by Counselor Annis. Any questions, omissions, errors, or whatever on the minutes? Yes, Counselor?
Eleven A. This is a misprint. Eleven A is the CAO and then it's COA.
Thank you. Thanks for noticing that. And that's, that's been noted and it'll be corrected. Anything else? If we're good. All those in favor?
Aye.
If I'm reminded of any, motion carried. Business arising from the previous meeting minutes of June the tenth, twenty twenty-five. Do we have any more business out of those? Are you done? Okay. We have no correspondence for the evening. I don't believe you, no. Committee reports. Committee of the whole meeting minutes from June the tenth, twenty twenty-five. Could I have a, a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll move.
Moved by Counselor Forbes. I have a second. Seconded by Counselor Downey. Any errors, omissions, questions on those minutes? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
If I'm reminded of any, motion carried. Next we'll call on our treasurer, Katrina Plante. If she can come up and give us our treasure report for May twenty twenty-five.
So these statements are covering May of twenty twenty-five. You'll also find readers to date through like January up until the end of May. And you will find in the expense section also the last columns will be the percentages of the budgets so far. If we look under revenue, under line four and five, under May, that is what we received that month for our grants and our warrants. If you look under number, sorry, number ten, other government revenue, that amount is related to, is received from departments in New Brunswick and it's for the CCDF. And if you look down to fifteen and sixteen, that is our numbers, fifteen, sorry, miscellaneous income, that's our rent from unit two, unit three of the Central York Office Building. Sixteen is our interest income from pre accounts, public reserve, operating reserve, and the CCDF accounts. Move on to expenses. Number four through eleven are all the wages as well as number fifteen, which is human resources personnel. And there's slight difference in that starting in May because of two part-time employees, and that's for the boat launches. Other than that, there's no really significant change as far as early for that section. I have to go on to detective services. You'll find Kestwick Valley, sorry, Castle Grove and Kestwick Valley, under three and four, all the related expenses are from nine to fourteen. But beside nine's three and four, you'll find the expenses. And as at the end of May, we're roughly forty-three percent through the year. So we're still, they're still both covering that mark.
Thank you, Karen. Do we have any, sorry, I have a motion for the unplotted treasurer report for May. Move to Counselor Karen. Seconded by Counselor Annis. Now that we have any questions on the treasurer report for May? Well, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
If I'm reminded of any, motion carried. Thank you. We'll move on to our chief administrative officers' report.
Actually, I don't have one. Apologies.
Okay. Mine might be a little long. It's all verbal stuff.
Oh, I'll go. June the third, the Capital Region Service Commission had a full tour of a landfill facility for the board. To state that it was interesting would be an understatement. It is a high-tech business, and I might add, the more we recycle, the less fee Central York municipality has to pay. Therefore, we all need to pitch in to keep our costs to a minimum. July the fourteenth, I assisted with the judging of the junior Miss Kestwick Valley, that screens three and five, through the five. Very interesting, and I wish all seven participants could have won that day. I was invited to the Birch Corner Baptist Church to participate in the Father's Day service. I was given a very warm welcome and introduction by Counselor Annis. He and his family attends that church on a regular basis. Yesterday, I attended the Ignite Board meeting. It was an orientation session as there were four new members, but I'm sure they all sit on boards elsewhere. Also yesterday at four P M. was a Capital Region Service Commission Economic Development Committee meeting. Black Art Engineering demonstrated how they could assist municipalities with new businesses and housing complexes with traffic flow and cost per person. For these potential projects, our municipality is a bit rural and undersized for them to do much for us. More demonstrated to Fredrickton and Ormachtown in Maryland was my thoughts. Today, I attended the Capital Region Service Commission Infrastructure Committee meeting, and, and most of the discussion was related to the trail connectivity. The waterway trails, what's they call the blue trails, is much further advanced than the motorized and bikeable trails. By September one, the commission will have much of the system digitally identified. And I must say, that meeting today was the very first meeting in the new location of the service mission on Region Street. It's a very nice facility. They'll be able to house all their executive staff and, and planning and whatnot in the one facility now on Region Street. And I had a short tour of it before the meeting ended. It was a very nice spot. I also have been invited to the PGA Tour Americas this year. I have two V I P passes for July the third to the sixth. Should anyone desire to go, please let me know. These passes are available. That's my report. I move to accept my report. I have a second.
Sir.
Seconded by Counselor Drake. Any questions on my report? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
If I'm reminded of any, motion carried. New business? Do we have, there's nothing on the agenda. Do we have new business from Counselor State? Counselor Annis?
Yes, I'd like to first to explore the need or feasibility of radar sign or signs. And particularly thinking, speed signs, that is, I'm thinking about the 104 adjacent to Kestwick Valley Memorial School. I do have concerns regarding traffic in that area. And I would like to see us take some action of some sort if we're able to before we have a catastrophic event there involving students or others. I'm not sure that a permanent sign is a solution. I don't know if a sign at all is a solution. And I know that we've talked about the issue of speeding in other areas, particularly heading up through, past Green Hill Lake. That's a fairly, fairly straight stretch there too, where speeds do get excessive with some vehicles. But I, I guess at this point, I'd like to know if it's feasible for us to look at the possibility of either doing something near Kestwick Valley as a start, or if maybe a portable sign is our option, so we can move it around some and have it in different places to bring awareness to, to people traveling about excessive speed. Or maybe it's not feasible at all.
Okay, I can address maybe a little bit of that. I don't know if council's aware or not, but we tried to get the speed zone reduced around the, the six-twenty at the Meyer Rock quarry. And we wanted radar signs put up. Anyway, we had a, a note back from the Deputy Minister of DTI, and they don't, they don't partici, they don't participate in that because if you put radar signs up, people get used to them and they get numb to them and they just don't pay attention. And they didn't want the speed reduced because it, it has a pattern to them, a flow pattern. And they, they do this not just per community, but it was per national, wasn't it? Like they, they take national advice on these, these speed zones. And if they reduce that, you get a slop against someone that's going to go less than the speed limit, it's going to cause people to pass where they shouldn't be passing and all this. This, this is what was basically in the letter. And we thought we'd address that. Our CAO formulated the letter and I signed it. So we thought if we addressed that first before we got to the Kestwick Valley school, might be a stepping stone. So I, I'm not sure after that letter from the six-twenty, what we can do for these speed signs and radar signs. And because as you know, we don't own roads. DTI owns the roads and we're at their, you know, whatever they decide or they're banned. And so I, I give that information just so maybe you have more comment after that, and maybe our CAO has more.
Yeah, sure.
Comment from the content of the letter.
I'm, I'm not recommending a reduced speed limit beyond what's there. I'm reflecting back to one of the RCMP corporals, I believe it was corporal presented here. I, I posed some questions around radar signs and their effectiveness. And he did indicate there were some benefits to having signs. And I don't know if it's the same issue, if it's not a fixed structure that we're putting there or not. I, I would just, I, I think we should continue exploring the possibility. And, and I don't want to be responding after there's an incident and we would have wished we would have done something.
Yeah, especially because this is, Meyer is a whole different thing from the school.
It is, but it was, that was a stepping stone. If you're trying to see, if you, if you have anything to add on our letter.
They're not very favorable to the radar signs. That's all I, you know, got from the response. You can always ask.
Meyer isn't even going to purchase the radar signs.
I had no issue writing the letter and asking, but they, DTI is not fond of radar signs on their highways. It's one thing when you're in the city and in school zones, but on the highway, it's a little bit different.
So that is a school zone?
No, I know. The, the school zone goes down to thirty. Does the school zone, yeah.
Fifty.
Yeah. In the city, they go down to thirty, but I'm, I just know that they're not favorable to radar signs, but.
But there's, there's city streets that they have the radar signs.
No, I'm, but I'm just saying that, however, it makes a little bit more sense in the city because of the volume of traffic. I know there's a lot of traffic down the 104, up on McKean Drive, you know, there's a lot of traffic. But we can always ask is what I'm trying to say, but I'm not expecting a positive response.
I'm just thinking of a, for example, they have radar signs. It does bring to the attention of motorists. And, and I know that local motors may get used to it being there, but I'm also thinking about the traffic that's not accustomed. They're coming back to school. Isn't all that feasible?
Every request for DTI and there is a signage throughout your term so far and then declining. The only thing that has been very helpful is the visa they gave us for a vote. No, don't be mad in the negative way. It's just seems to be the way they do business.
But I, I can, I can keep trying. I can keep trying to jab at them. It's, it doesn't mean it has to be a dead end. Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Sorry.
Did I miss the gentleman?
I'll let him go first.
I'll call it you.
Two things. Is public safety under DTI?
No.
What's it under?
Public safety, it's, it's all the.
No, but I'm just wondering if this could be used for anything here. And number two, I have noticed that they have placed different police cars in certain areas. And you do notice that, that the lack of speed and people behaving themselves. And in most, in many cases, I know they don't have people, but it does, it can affect people for a while. But this is, I think this is a problem. You have to take something that works for a while and then move to something that works for a while. And then maybe go back to the other. It's just, people are very busy. And they get involved in themselves and not in anybody else. That's it.
Okay. Counselor Drake?
Could we work in conjunction with the RCMP and their public information office to acquire, if they have access to, a portable radar truck trailer? Has it a sign on it? Has it flashing lights? If I want it, I will say please on one, I would imagine the RCMP would have access to one. Is there a benefit, our benefit?
Any, any, I have no idea. I have no idea about them, so. But it's being no good, so. Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to say to Counselor Edwards' point, it's more of a, unfortunately, enforcement. I just wanted to say to Counselor Edwards' point, it's more of a, unfortunately, enforcement and the corporal was alluding to that when he was here, how they have the track, traffic enforcement team now, and they're, they're going in different areas, as Counselor Edwards mentioned. The radar signs that you see, like in Harvey, you mentioned Harvey, it's because it's within their old village limits, so they were already a former municipality, it's already their territory. Provincial municipal highway, same thing, it's a partnership, municipalities have more say in that, but Central York has no municipal partnership in, in highways, it's strictly D T I.
Counselor Edwards?
Just to continue on the same thing, I think it's our job to pass on our concerns and then let them do their jobs.
Yeah, it's noted, well, and I'll, hang, hang on a minute. And I, I will have chat further with the Deputy Minister and see if I can impress anything for.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, Counselor.
It's six seventeen by the school, right?
Six seventeen is what I'm more concerned with, the 104.
Okay, because the 104 is.
Is six seventeen the one that goes up from the store?
No.
No, okay, well, no.
It's the one off the 104 that goes to.
Where are we getting from? No, it's a Stanley.
Yes.
No, it is a Stanley, okay.
Any other concerns, questions? Do we have any other new business, other than what Counselor Anis brought? Hearing none, could I have a motion to move into closed session, please? Moved by Counselor Anis, second by Deputy Mayor Brownwell. All those in favor?